I want to apologize to you in advance.
It was like October.
Oh, boy, this sounds good. Hello, Lou?
Hi.
I've admired you so much over the ages, over the years, last two and a half years.
This is getting worse.
You got your boots?
What's that?
Uh, guilt seal.
Okay.
Oh.
Good evening.
Is this for me, Lisa?
Yes.
Ursula's, okay.
So, and I also figured you won't say any of those names.
Okay.
Just that there's five properties.
I have stuff printed out too if I wanted, so.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah, that's all those three things are, yeah. Okay.
Alright. Good evening, everyone.
Okay.
Seeing that's five o'clock, let's open up the meeting. Everyone please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance.
Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pardon me.
Actually, we've got an action-packed unit tonight.
Yeah.
Lots of potentially in-depth stuff, and we'll see what we can get through and how we get through it. We'll start this, uh, the meeting off right with, uh, Lisa Carbon, our tax collector. Uh, you have a report for us on?
Yes, uh, this is on the deeds that are due, um, are coming due. There are five people. Four whom consistently pay, one who's sporadic, but I'll show you. I printed out, this is everything that's owed by each one, okay? But this is for what's due. For the years, okay? Just to give you kind of a hindsight of what I look at.
All the names look like people that we already have agreements with?
Yes, yes.
That all of those have agreements, all of them have been keeping up with their agreements except for one.
Is very sporadic.
Okay.
Is not keeping up with the month-to-month.
Okay.
But you can look at, I mean, it's got like, what, everything that's owed, but this is all like payments from October, well, August actually, but C goes October, December, January, April, July.
Okay. Yeah, it looks like, yeah, there might have been, yeah. Um, so what we had said with these people is that we would schedule more, like another meeting this year.
Yep.
Yeah, like every annually, just to kind of go over everything and make sure, um, they're on track, so.
Okay.
That's what we'll, I think that's what we'll, we'll do.
Alright.
I think there's a, there's a few others we have agreeing.
Yes, they're, they're no, they're no longer, they still owe for liens, but these are, these are, the town can take the property.
Right, for the year, the specific year, so I will leave that with you.
Okay.
So you've got the copies.
So we'll schedule appointments for the remaining people who have agreements to come in or just
renew?
Me talk to them, or how do you?
I think it'd be good to.
We, we should.
You want them?
Yeah, come in, yeah, face to face, yep.
Okay.
And then decide if you're gonna renew or not, correct?
Yep.
Yep, yeah, and then, uh, drop another agreement.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, 'cause for the, for the most, it's working out.
Perfectly, yeah.
Amazingly.
Excellent.
Yeah, some of them have paid off liens.
Yeah.
And they're moving on to the next.
The next lien.
Years of liens.
Perfect.
Very good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's great to hear, yep, right direction.
Yeah.
And with some of these, we knew that, like, the prior year's agreement wasn't going to produce that same thing, and it was on them to pay the extra. So that's the purpose of having the meeting, the follow-up, just to see, like, and remind them that it's not going away, yeah, yep. Alright, Debbie can hold on to these for the meetings?
Yep.
Thank you. Alright, did you have anything else for us?
Nope, life is good.
That's great to hear.
Awesome.
Registrations are really busy, which is good.
Yep.
Um, election stuff is really busy, so it's gonna be kind of hinky though, back-to-back elections with all the absentee ballot stuff. 'Cause I'm gonna finish one and begin another.
Yeah.
Immediately.
Wow.
Yeah.
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 Gonna be busy, huh?
So I'm just trying to keep everything in order. If I start walking around with it, you'll cop you'll.
So I was hoping to make one of them, um, seminars that the state is giving.
Oh, you didn't get to.
All the election officials, I haven't been able to get out, but is there any new things that you?
Um, no, but you know what? Anything that comes through, I will make sure I send to you.
Okay. I hope to, I still hope to make one, there's, I think there's several left.
I think they're till the end of the month.
Yeah. I was just, did you say you were signing up for the webinar on that, Debbie?
Um, no, that was taxed eating.
Oh, taxing.
No, not taxed.
Tax rate setting.
Tax rate setting, yeah, tax rate setting. So you don't have, you don't have to sign up for that, by the way, 'cause I was like, oh, this is just a link to the video that they're gonna do. So I'm gonna have everybody come in here and put it on the TV.
Oh.
Alright, that'll be good to watch, then. It might even be good if we could put it up, like, on the, you know, the website, or?
I don't know if, I, I can ask if we can do that, I don't know. I don't know if it's for officials only.
Yeah, yeah, like it's like an informer. Okay.
Yeah, 'cause that's. That's through NHMA, was it, or?
No, that was through somebody else, yeah.
It's a private company.
Oh, yes, you'd have to check.
Yeah, and, but I do believe NHMA is having one also, which I will take that as well.
Okay. Excellent, anything we can get, like, out to our community would be great.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah.
Yep. Awesome. Um, and on the election note, um, I had sent all of the, to reserve the school use forms, you know, for the elections.
Yeah.
I had sent those back in January, but I also sent them out today to Liz, the principal, and to Craig.
Yeah.
Um, just to, you know, just as a reminder, I figured it wouldn't hurt.
Yeah.
Here's.
That's definitely good, especially when they're in transition.
Yeah, so I sent those out today to, resent them, I guess.
Yep. Okay.
Cool. And then what is it, September tenth and eleventh, uh, November fifth?
Yep, September tenth and November fifth are the two elections.
Okay. Go out and vote, everybody, for sure.
Yeah, this is gonna be some type of turnaround, huh?
I know, a quick one.
Yeah. They're gonna be like rubbing shoulders.
Yeah. Is there anything, like, is there anything that you can be helped with on that, or is it?
Um, not really, 'cause it's just a matter, it's all like clerical work, really. You know, it's in putting everything into the state, making sure people get in their applications for the absentee ballots, making sure ballots come back that did go out, just that kind of stuff. It's just more clerical. And keeping everything, you know, on track.
And the state changed their website.
Yeah, that was another thing. I had to learn the website all over again, which actually, it's getting easier, thank you, God.
Oh, good.
Yeah, it really, it's getting much easier. I feel better with it.
Good.
The Uokava stuff's a little hinky, but again, it's just repetition, it's doing it.
Yeah, and Uokava is people who don't live in the United States?
Right, or military.
But they're registered to vote in the United States?
Yeah.
You mean like LAMR?
Like.
That would be like dual citizenships and?
I'm guessing?
That's, yeah.
There's a family, there's a family.
According to the state, it's because they are registered here, they have that right to vote, even if they don't live here, which.
There's a family that registered to vote in New Ipswich, but they've never even been here. Like, their parents lived here or something, or the grandparents.
Right, the kids were not born here.
But the kids weren't born, yeah, I.
What is that called? This doesn't sound right.
Uokava. Well, I, I agree, but that's what the state says is okay.
I talked to the state about it.
I don't know what that stands for, I can't remember.
That sounds like something.
Loading the ballot box.
Sounds like something we talked to our state reps about.
Yeah.
What is this?
Oh, that's another on my agenda.
Uokava?
Yeah.
Yeah, I forget what it stands for.
I'd have to be looking at it to tell you.
Yeah, a, a lot of it is like military families who, you know.
Yeah, well, out of all the, out of all that I've had, I've only had two military out of like eight.
Their state, they live in another country, but they're.
The rest are people who live out of the country and have no, um, plans on returning.
Interesting.
Yeah, so weird.
Good that they can have a vote.
Yeah, really.
That's a little bit of reverse of the taxation without representation, huh?
I just find it weird that if you don't, why would you care if you don't have any intention of living in the United States? What do you care what?
Right. Exactly. What goes on?
If you, I don't know.
Yeah, you know what?
It's just weird to me.
I guess we can't fight.
Yeah. Maybe it seems like they would have had to have been here at some point.
Right.
Right, but no, there's people though, um, that they're not even in the system, and if they send me the federal postcard application, I have to register them and give them a voter ID number.
We can fight through our state reps, we just can't do anything about what we're handed.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I just do what I'm given and pray.
Mm-hmm.
Alright.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Alright, honey?
Yeah.
So we're good?
We're good.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in, and then, uh.
I'll have to cook.
Yeah, we'll keep you up to date on all the meetings.
Have a good night, have a good night.
Thank you. J-wo.
You ready, Casey?
Sure.
Alright. How's it been going?
The most challenging part is learning the software. Otherwise, largely okay.
That's good, alright. Cool.
And that's coming. The software.
No, it's here.
Software is here.
No, I mean, you said that's the most challenging, but it's, you're, you're almost hitting the peak of the curve.
It's lovely. We're, we're working our way up.
Yeah, good.
Not for light years ahead of me.
Excellent, yeah.
So Jenny has been like all over this whole building code thing, um, so she can probably give her best explanation, do you think, or do you want to speak on it?
Probably, I'm not quite sure where we're going with it.
Okay.
Do we have the ordinance and that's?
So the selectmen have to adopt the state thing, the state, so the, the, go.
Okay, so, uh, the state has amended international building codes for the version 2021. Um, there's a hundred amendments to the international building code that the state has amended.
A hundred amendments?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that something like that?
Well, that wouldn't be the state, would it?
They, so the state goes off of the international building codes.
Yeah.
And they had, the international building code came up with a new version, 2021, and the state has amended over a hundred things from that version.
Oh.
Oh.
This sounds easy. Now, have you talked to other building inspectors, like, is there pros and cons to? Or I, I should say, should we hold off on adopting any one, or is that possible?
I'm.
Where's the deadline?
Hold on, hold on. No, Casey, yeah, but you're asked, like, I'd like to hear what your input is on this.
The state, rather than create their own building code, adopts one by reference from the International Code Council. It's just better to have somebody else create the code, write it, then publish it, and rather than us create our own and constantly update it, they just adopt that book. And over the last few years, they've adopted the book, but then they find stuff in the book that we don't quite want to do it that way in New Hampshire, but we like the rest of the content. So they'll create the amendments to the book. Under New Hampshire law, the book is in play with the amendments, the amendments. So they're gonna change something, some wording somewhere in there. An example may be in fire drills, they add in a lockdown drill rather than a fire drill for current events. They'll add that and change the language, so you can substitute one for the other. I understand that there was one of the cases in one of the books in years past where they required a scissor stair in a residential dwelling, which would prohibit us from building our standard Cape house, come in the front door and walk up the set of stairs, you would have to have a turn back. So New Hampshire said, well, we build our houses that way, we're gonna amend the building code to allow a full flight of stairs and not have the landing halfway up. Those are the types of amendments that are in there. Every few years, the ICC updates the codebook. I think it's on a three-year cycle, they put amendments in and so forth. New Hampshire kind of falls behind if we don't keep updating them. So the legislative body this year moved the process to update from the 2018 book to the 2021 book. Right now, the 24 book is out, but we're not there yet. New Hampshire's just choosing to lie a little bit behind. We have some time to look at the other book before the legislative body gets to it. The amendments that were in play on the 2018 book largely came over to the 2021 book with some minor adjustments in order to bring it into line with the new book, just as needed. Through the legislative process, they looked at all the ICC codes that we normally adopt, and they took on all but one of them as being 21 additions. The hotly contested topic of the update was in the energy code. From the 2018 to the 2021, there's very significant changes, and that's where the hotly contested material was, thinking it's gonna cost the builders and the buyers more money in order to put in all the new plays in the new book. Since it was hotly contested, they dropped that. So the legislative body moved from 18 to 21 with the exception of the energy code, which we stayed on 18 at a state level. Legislative body adopted it, governor signed it into law on August 2nd, retroactive to July 1, but there's a six-month grace period. Any projects that were already started can use the 18, any projects that are coming can use one or the other, but they can't use both. And at the end of this year, everybody needs to be back onto the 21.
Alright, so even, like, with this question of adoption, we don't really have much of a choice, because it's like the state's guidelines are that minimum threshold, right? Is that how I interpret it? Like, it's just a formality, yeah?
It sounds like it's a. Like, for what, though? 'Cause we're not a home rule state, so why would we vote on this and we don't vote on everything else the state does?
Yeah.
It seems kind of weird to me. Like, what's the purpose of us? What if we vote no? What happens?
I don't think we can, like, it doesn't matter.
Wait, no, yeah, if we're voting, we can vote no. You're gonna say all opposed. What if we, what if we, what happens if we say no?
From my understanding, you can't enforce building codes?
Yeah, you can't.
Then there would be no more enforcement of building codes?
Right.
Should we poll the people, see what they want on?
Oh, interesting. Alright, so then we wouldn't be able to enforce building codes at all?
So we wouldn't have, need a building department, we wouldn't need, you wouldn't need inspections, 'cause you can't enforce anything, right?
That's, did you, are you guessing, or did you, like, read that somewhere?
Um, so I, since becoming, um, whatever, in the building department, I joined the New Hampshire Buildings Association, Officials Association, on HBOA.
Yeah.
And I've been attending trainings, and there was a training that came up about the 2021 version and how this governor was planning to amend stuff. So I attended that training and learned all about the amendments, and with the feedback from residents, only made two big changes to our guidelines that I found in the files and that are, were being used when I took over this position.
But you, this was at one of them, one of the seminars, that you're not allowed to enforce?
Yes.
Any code?
And it's also in writing. They sent the governor, for being part of the New Hampshire Buildings Association, they send you all the documentation. And the governor, they sent us i- in writing what the governor signed in as amendments, and it's a new, um, RSA that they created to, um, to do, to, if you have guidelines, if we're letting them at any municipality, they have to submit their guidelines to them. And if you don't, then you can't enforce, that's the black and white.
I wonder how many towns have no inspections. I know Sharon has none.
Really?
Yeah.
You can build whatever you want in Sharon and no inspections?
Buyer beware.
Really?
The town probably doesn't take the liability if there's like fire.
There's no liability.
Right.
Yeah?
I, I'm curious. Yeah, 'cause Mark lives in Sharon, Mark.
Right.
And that's what he said. The only thing they'll come out and check is your setbacks and.
Do they have, like, building permits still and charge fees for that, even though they don't have inspections?
You have states.
I don't know.
But it's kind of curious, and it kind of reminds me, my son was just in the Navy, I'm sorry to go on a little side room, but he said, driving through, like, Sweden, Finland, Norway, no stop signs.
Yeah.
Drive at your own risk.
Anyway. Except when you get in the city, he said they put yield signs.
Wow.
And he said traffic just flows smooth as can be, so, kind of interesting.
Wow.
Kind of same line of thought, like, less regulation. Does, does the world fall apart? Maybe not.
I guess it creates them to be more cautious of what they're doing on their own.
That's right.
They don't want to get into an accident, right?
Yeah.
Interesting.
But they probably use their directionals, whereas here, people don't even really have directionals.
Yeah.
You're talking Scandinavians.
Well, yeah, 'cause we're, 'cause we're at a stop.
What's a placa?
You're talking Scandinavians, I doubt it. 'Cause there are a lot more around the box out there, too.
Yeah.
Alright, now, wrap this back to, uh, New Hampshire.
Yep. New Hampshire.
Um, yeah, that's interesting, though, like, the whole thing, and I noticed we have an application in front of us. Do you want us to look at this as a part of this discussion, too? A permit application?
So it's the, so these are the guidelines that are in place for New Ipswich building codes.
Okay.
So this is New Ipswich's building codes, and because we go along with the, well, the state does, the state.
Historically.
Historically, um, and the state is going off with the 2021 international building code. If we want to make those amendments, we have, you guys have to approve what is in front of you, and we have, once approval's made, because of the new RSA, we have 10 days to send it to the state.
And it has to be done by August 30th, correct?
Approval has to be made by August 30th.
Right. So is the only thing you changed, is that highlighted for the first part?
Two things, so the verbiage that I feel like would explain that, that this in front of you is, um, our adoption of the 2021 international building code that the state recommends. I just added that. And then we did not have verbiage, which is one of the amendments on temporary structures. I'll get this entered in. It's next to the last page. Yeah, it's like on the last page. So that whole section on temporary structures I've added. Um, I find it important that we add verbiage on that, because a lot of feedback I'm getting from the public, a lot of questions are on this topic, so it'd be. And I base this off of the new amendment, which I can pop up on the screen.
So this is taken out of the IBC?
Yes, the 2021 version, which was adopted on August 2nd, like Casey said.
And we haven't assigned a fee for this one yet, is that what I'm reading?
So.
'Cause we've never had a, had any attorney for it.
So there is technically a fee, because a temporary structure in, in the amendment says 10 or 10 guests, which I, I'll.
Yeah, I see it right here.
Yeah, 10 or more persons.
Oh, um. I'm probably.
Says that cover an area greater than 120 square feet over the gathering of 10 or more persons.
Yes, and this is how it's worded and changed, um, that the state did. So we have a fire safety inspection fee schedule. In the event of an event, there is an event fee, which is $50, and in the event of an assembly, 10 or more people, we have a fee for that, it's 50. So it's real, when, the building department doesn't really enforce, from what I understand, this amendment, it's the fire department, 'cause they're life safety inspections.
Do you?
So there would be a permit, because we need to have our file. The building department wouldn't charge a fee, but the fire department should, because they're the ones actually doing those inspections, not the building department, because for temporary structures, they have to check. And Casey can probably speak on that better than I can.
Uh, my one comment on this is this number of people. Do you know what town we live in?
Right?
10 people is.
Jason's family is big enough in that.
Yeah, if I, if I put up a 10, I mean, like, every Sunday, if I was to have an outdoor event, I would need to go get a permit, so I don't know if the town can do anything about that.
See, yeah, it says 10 or more people. I don't, I don't think it's like you're putting up your little gazebo tent thing in the backyard. I don't think that's what it means. I feel like it's.
Well, that's not assuring.
Well, it says tents of 200 square feet or?
200 square feet, so it's, uh, 10 by 20.
Right.
Casey, you were gonna say something?
Uh, assembly permit, we would find assembly permit in state law is, is the threshold for 50 to 100.
Is that right?
Mm.
I wonder why here it says 10 or more.
That's some, that's somewhere else's state law for the assembly permit.
So 50 to 100, that one I get.
Yeah, but 10 or more people, that doesn't make sense.
Yeah, Thanksgiving dinner. I guess a lot of these laws are, um, they require the officials to use discretion. I would say, I believe.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, can't.
And, and I mean, I don't think they, when they say temporary structure, that they mean you put it up and you're taking it down the same day or the next day. I, I'm thinking like, like Hillfest, that's a temporary tent for a bazillion people, and they have a bunch of little other temporary tents around, you know what I'm saying? That it's there for a, a gathering.
Yeah, and these are all, these are all hopeful interpretations, but it's not, you won't be able to pull that out of this.
Yeah.
But there's nothing we can do.
I'm thinking like, if you were gonna have a wedding on your property, and you're putting up one of those big, huge tents.
Yeah, but it, there's nothing we can do. We would, we have to accept this or not have a building inspector anymore.
Well, I th- I don't remember the wording exactly, but it's like you can change it, but you can't be less stringent than what the code is.
Right. You can be more, just like all the R.
We could change it to five people.
Right, but you can't change it to 20.
But we can't change it to 20.
Right.
And so, yeah.
Interesting.
So this is.
So what's the point, what was the point of adding this into the application?
Um, I think, well, I think Deb gave a couple good examples, so, uh, Hillfest, uh, wedding tent, um, another example is like, um, I'm housing horses for a few months during the summer. Do I ask for a permit for that? Well, from, I think the fire side, the answer would be yes, because you have to check to make sure that the spikes or the way downs.
For life safety.
Yes.
Right. But like all the people who put up their little tents for farmer's market every Saturday.
They're my less than 200.
There are sections of the building.
It says or for the gathering, not and. So, but you know, they're not gonna have 10 people standing under their little.
But this is an interesting.
Yeah, it is.
Interesting, and, and in my mind, extremely strange. I don't think you need to read into it that far.
There, there is also sections in our building guidelines that say what do and do not require permits. And maybe that's where exception, like, doesn't require a permit if.
Yeah.
But still, be continuous with the 2021 if we're following that.
It'd be interesting to know how that would hold up if somebody.
But they, the state has created a new RSA, like I said, that. But they, the state has created a new RSA, like I said, that says you have sixty days days from July first to show amendments to building guidelines based on new codes for adoption in the state of New Hampshire. So, um, once Au- August thirtieth is the deadline, but once it's approved, we have ten days to submit, from my understanding. And if you do not, then you cannot enforce the codes that you have in place in your municipality. So, that is the reason why, um, I grant for approval.
Yeah, it's good to know.
And open to amendments, we have ten days.
Who'd do that? That would be a planning board, I don't know.
What's that?
Fire department could suggest an amendment.
To what?
Well, they have their own, um, codes.
You said.
And from my understanding, they accepted that twenty twenty one as well.
The fire code?
Fire codes, the twenty twenty one fire code.
The fire code was updated to the twenty twenty one edition.
It happened.
Yeah, right, that's what I'm saying.
So that would be in the fire code then as well, this temporary structures then?
Did they go back to, um?
The temp- the temporary structures was part of the twenty twenty one international building code and then, um. Does that, is that what the fire follows as well, or do they follow a different book?
The fire side follows a different book, there's two books that cover the fire code and the building code. They don't necessarily completely match in language, they're from different organizations. But the general practice of the code world is the more restrictive applies.
And from what I've seen, a lot of the codes that were changed in the international bill, all the amendments in the international building code for twenty twenty one. Like, um, refers to the other, the fire book, like so instead of having their own, they're just referring to the fire book now.
So. In the past, like even just recent past, just like kinda wrap my head around this and the tent is kinda where I'm stuck at. Cause I know that there was some kerfuffle about feeing and code dates and different things that we had just gone through over the last few months with that. But so, before say I wanna have a wedding at my house, I would just simply call a tent company. And have them come and install a tent and no involvement from the town.
There should have been a building permit application filled out and then you, and you should have then called for fire inspections and from.
Or there should have been.
Wh- what I learned, um, with Gary is that they would keep and we should keep a manual of the instructions that state the tie downs. Because that's where liability comes in, if a big gust of wind comes and blows the tent away, we wanna have instructions on file and make sure that they were followed.
Yeah. So it's, since we have a building department, cause it kinda seems like we're inserting ourselves into something where we shouldn't even have any oversight or liability. For, like going onto somebody's property, cause if a professional company sets it up, the liability is theirs and theirs alone. But it sounds like the state or has put us in like that position to make these. Checks if we're going to have a building department, um. So then it's more the fee schedule then was the next layer to this, cause then there was some disagreement with what the fee. Could, like was, could and what should be, like going forward, is that gonna be a discussion tonight or?
I would love to bring that up.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright.
I, I mean, I've thought about that a lot and I think really we do, I don't, I I don't know how it was created, but we do have a fee schedule for all the. Fire inspection, safety checks and there's probably like ten.
Like daycare, foster families, um.
That should be getting done, but, um.
Life safety, just for to get a CO, cause part of it's done by the building inspector, the other part's done by the fire chief or fire inspector. So I've, that, and all those fee, all the fees that we collect, that the fire department does, they should get the fee. You know what I'm saying? They should get the money to put into there.
So then the question to that is, do they have a means to accept funds?
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, right.
But now this, I I gotta go back to this, cause there was an or.
Stuck on the tent.
I was first, I hit the, I hit the ten persons like whoa, this don't work good in our town.
Yeah.
Now I'm looking at a hundred and twenty square feet, that's ten by ten. You buy that tent at Walmart and I gotta, to set it up in my yard, I gotta call up Casey and say. Or Ben and say, hey, you wanna come see if I set this thing up?
If it's greater than a hundred and twenty square feet.
That's ten by ten.
Ten by twelve.
You can buy a canopy at Walmart.
Yeah.
Hey, I, mine's twelve by twelve.
I didn't make that fridge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I know, this is crazy.
They were not like at you, just in general, like.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I understand, I just.
I'm not attacking you.
No, I know, I'm taking it as that, I'm just.
It just hits like wow.
Mm-hmm, that's just what the, yeah, state has given us to consider.
Wait.
And that's how the, that's how the amendment has changed.
So, if we took that part out.
We don't have to attach a fee to it either, I don't know, like, uh, we just track it, we don't have to attach a fee to it. And then the fee that comes into play is the safety checks for assembly and amendment.
So that'd be fire.
Cause it offsets people's time.
Right.
You know, cause if somebody is going out to do something, you know, yeah, it makes sense to have the fee.
Right. But it doesn't make sense.
And I don't know if it, if it makes any sense to take this out, because then.
Yeah.
Nobody will know that they should be doing this, like I don't know how often it is skipped and I'm not talking necessarily about the ten by twelve canopies, but you know.
It needs to be there, yeah.
Would they fall under that?
No, yeah.
I, which is.
Maybe, um, because it is worded, sorry to interrupt, um, cause it's worded, I'm pretty sure in the fee schedule.
Seems crazy, yeah.
Um, ev- event tent, that we could just add event tent to the guideline. So it's not all tents, like, like if your kids are.
It's not, it's not a canopy.
Right, or if, not a canopy, not if your kids are tenting the backyard, cause they wanna have some fun, it's just not a tent.
It's not.
Yeah, but is that? So we're able to do that, we can shift around this verbiage however we like?
Um.
We can send it in and see if they say anything about it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, because, because you're right, I didn't think of that.
Yeah.
Kids go in the backyard.
Right.
With a cabin tent and you gotta call the fire department.
Right. Right.
And I think that is more the intent of, uh, that code is more for.
Events, public gatherings.
That, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Commercial.
Yeah.
Yeah, once we have it on paper though, then all of a sudden, every kid that's got a lemonade stand is getting the police called on him, you know?
She reads the word event.
Event.
Yeah.
And while I was sitting here listening to you talk, I pulled up the Fire Academy's website trying to find guidance to the tent. Cause I know it's out there somewhere and right on the top of it. It reads, many restaurants, event sites, schools, hospitals, healthcare facilities and others find it necessary to set up temporary tents and structures to support their operations. Which is kind of all more.
Commercial.
Assembly, commercial events, whichever word you choose to use versus personal use.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do have residential and commercial fees, so we can just not have a residential fee, but a commercial fee.
Right.
Fee.
Right.
Okay.
Uh, I I think that would be the better way to go.
Or, yeah, it better be good, just to look at it, yeah, just to understand better, um.
Doesn't it? I mean, there's no way, even if you didn't have a fee, there's no way everyone in town who puts up a twelve by twelve.
No.
Gazebo thing, you know, the pop up, whatever, is gonna call the fire department and they don't have time to be running out and checking everybody's backyards.
Yeah.
Right.
To, that doesn't even, I I think commercial would be more the way to go.
Yeah, I like.
Or like if you're having a, putting a big huge tent with a wed- for a wedding, maybe that's something you would wanna.
That's where I would say it, it could, it could read for any event where.
You know? Excuse me.
For the public, gathering of the public.
Yeah. Yeah.
Where, like, leave the families alone, if they're having a barbecue, just let them be.
Right. Right, I hundred percent agree.
Yeah.
Can we make, can we submit that and say we don't like this, it doesn't work for our town? How do you do that?
That you wouldn't want to incorporate the one amendment?
Or. The restrictions here.
Is that in the twenty eighteen?
Twenty, I think this is a complete, the RSA.
It's a completely new thing in twenty twenty one, yeah.
But even the verbiage that you read, that was from the life safety?
That was just the fire marshals.
I should have made a copy for, this is.
I was just trying to come up with the actual RSA.
I mean, I I highlighted this section cause I, but it starts here and this is like the exact verbiage of that new RSA.
That allows towns to submit amendments.
Yep, exactly, yep.
It's, it looks like it's fairly easy to understand.
As usual. So, so say they say, you know, they make a motion to adopt the twenty one, twenty twenty one IBC. Um, with the exception of they're gonna amend that to say events for commercial.
Mm-hmm.
And then you're gonna change it the way they said it and just submit this to the state.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
And then if they say, whoa, you can't do that or sure, that works.
And I. And I feel like that's the reason why they put the state put this in place, cause they wanna start making sure, yeah, I think that would.
Right, okay.
And I'm not even sure that we would know the correct wording to change, cause you have to define everything.
In, I don't think this is, I don't think it would, I think it would be immediately rejected. Just reading this, because it says. Amendment, you can s- the alderman or selectman can submit amendments. Provided such additional amendments are not inconsistent or with or less stringent than.
Right.
Nor intended to replace the requirements of the most recent addition.
But, like, it's, I mean, to me, if you read that, like every other thing. I mean, it's subject to interpretation really, it doesn't specify, is it, is it public, is it private, is it?
And that's, that's what I said a while back, yeah.
You know, if you're. You know?
Then what's the, um, the threshold for sheds?
Two hundred square feet? Two hundred fifty.
Just interesting, so you could put up a.
A shed is considered accessory building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like you're not gonna have people in, you know what I mean, people aren't, you're not gonna have a gathering of twenty people in your shed. Uh, I mean, maybe you are, but.
Neither are you going to a hundred and twenty square foot tent.
That'd just be weird.
I, I thought that was the two hundred figures for, um.
Sheds.
The, um.
It says any structure.
The final type of, um, structures.
Shed, shed.
No, it says any structure. Right?
Right.
That's what I read when I looked this over earlier in our permit requirements.
Interesting.
Looks like we have guidelines right now for like wood sheds.
Shed image.
Which, if we're down with the tent, I wouldn't mind.
So anything.
I don't know, what do we do about a tent?
I actually. Hold on, I actually think I might have, um, read it, cause I'm looking at it, this is what it used to say, right?
Casey.
Hundred and twenty, and point one is one.
Did they reintroduce, um, spread closure?
Oh, so they changed it from one twenty to two hundred, right?
Okay.
As far as I know, it's in the code book as such and amended it by New Hampshire.
Yeah, okay, so I had to back it, yeah.
Oops, oh no.
Because we used to have it years ago back in the.
Including connecting or is it, those spaces with a common means of egress or entrance that are used or.
It is or was, in the actual code book and amended, and New Hampshire amended it up, cause it was a copy.
Oh, it's just saying you need a permit.
Okay.
So they got rid of all that, yeah, okay.
Right.
Well, they got rid of that one?
So it's not the ten or.
It's two hundred square feet.
So the tent, where I have that covering area.
This is the new part, this is what they got rid of.
So the top should say sorry.
Should say sorry?
It should say tents.
I just realized I need to apologize.
Tents that cover an area of two hundred square feet or greater, including connecting areas or spaces with a common means of egress or entrance.
So it should say.
That are used or intended to be occupied by people shall not be erected, operated or maintained for any purpose without obtaining a permit from the building official.
Still.
It just says you need, you have to get a permit.
All of our. All of our last fifteen minutes applies.
There's good that came out of it.
What's that?
There's lots of good that came out of our fifteen minute.
Well, I don't know, I mean, it sounds like we're pretty helpless to do anything about it and if somebody wants to, um, pick a fight with their neighbor, they can call and say, hey, you have a tent up?
Don't encourage it, we have enough neighbors picking on each other.
So I think it should say temporary structures that cover an area greater than two hundred square feet.
Yep.
And then.
Event tent.
Is there like a duration, like for periods of time, heights, is there any additional?
I don't.
That would kinda push it like away from the pop up version to actual erected tents, is there anything that?
From what I understand, it's the, the tie downs and how much it weighs.
Yeah, alright, yeah, so it's more like the stake down.
Based on, and that's based on the fire code, not a building code.
What is that style tent called or described as, like, can we add that clarifying term to this, so that people don't think that it applies to pop up tents?
I'm not sure, um, Casey, was answering to that one?
Or we would just know?
My, my knowledge of it came from Gary who spoke as a fire chief, so, um. I'm not hundred percent sure, uh, but he was very strict on just tents that had the instructions. I worded it here, tie down. Tie down and wind load criteria instructions.
I wonder if I can get to it passed enough.
So part of the permit would, and this is the only. Time we have something from the fire code is once a tent manufacturer's solar tie down and wind load criteria instructions.
Okay, we're getting there.
I'm, I'm very much in line with what you were saying earlier. Like, what are we doing inserting ourselves in this?
Yeah.
That's crazy, but we don't have a choice. Wild, although we do have a choice, I briefly read here, we can adopt a different code.
You can stay with the twenty eighteen.
It says right here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
Well, the twenty eighteen, twenty eighteen code.
Well, only until the end of the year, right?
No. No, it says.
And that's more strict.
The board, mayor, alderman may adopt a nationally recognized.
Oh, nationally.
Code, not included in and not inconsistent with the state building code. Except for a nationally recognized code, which has the same or similar scope or purpose as determined by the building code. Review board for amendments to the state building code.
Just kidding.
Well, no.
You can, you can, you can adopt something else, but you can't.
No, you can.
We're not advocating adopting another book.
So.
No, I understand that, but that is an option.
So what's in here, this part, this top part is not what it is, that's the twenty eighteen.
Right.
This is the twenty twenty one, okay, so it doesn't include the ten, gathering of ten people or more, so that's encouraging.
It's all discouraging to me, but that's okay. That's part of sitting in this chair.
Well, um.
Right.
And I think should we, um, put temporary structures into the guidelines that those inspections, that we create general ledger lines for the fire department? Because those are, they're doing those inspections. And they have several, on the fee schedule, they have several different inspections that currently they are not accepting payments for. And I don't know if we've been charging, but we have fee, fees for them.
Yeah, I think, I think some of the ones, like the life safety for foster families and that kind of thing, daycares, the life safety inspections. I think that is going through the building department, which those should go through the fire department. They shouldn't be counted as revenue from the building department.
And then perhaps have a conversation.
Because the fire department is doing the inspection.
Okay.
So this really.
It sounds like a good discussion.
Yeah.
Really could be, um, temporary structures. See fire department. And the building department washes the hands of it.
Mm-hmm. Well, cause the inspection would be done by fire anyway.
There could have something like you have here, fire department approval is required. And not have to tell people.
So on a, on a town level and record keeping, would we not want to have any of? These on file? Like that, is there, like, would tents have like a tax assessment?
No, no, it's not particularly relevant, I don't think it needs to even be in there for.
And I don't, and I feel like.
I mean, cause we're not gonna keep a record of it, like.
I think it should come through the building department, I understand where you're going with this, but they don't have staff to.
It should, it should, yeah. Right.
Work with the community regularly and then to put that on them as well.
Oh, I didn't think of that.
To track it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, to to do the the permit through the software, through the building department, fine.
Yeah.
And then the fire inspector, fire chief, or whoever they.
Yeah.
Say can go inspect it.
It's kinda like.
And what does Casey think of all this?
Well, they lack the.
What are they doing in Ridge, after you answer his question?
What are they doing? Oh, you you don't have the staff in the fire department right now to handle it, you might as well keep it into the one document of guidelines rather than creating two unless you really substantially wanna have two for different things. What we're doing in Ridge is we have adopted. Through the board or selectman, a special events permit. And the special events permit is rather involved for any special events that happen in town. It it gets turned into it, and a part of that is the tent, and the tent inspection falls into the special events permit.
You're missing the special.
Hmm.
And what we use the special events for is the five K on the town common, football games at Franklin Pierce.
Hmm.
The things that are out of the ordinary of normal business.
On the fess.
But the, but the residents wouldn't be immune from this.
No.
But it kind of throws up a smokescreen so that people can feel like they're immune to it.
Our approach. Our approach to the tents is not going on to the property of a one a single, one or two person dwelling. And if your tent is going to be open to the public, people paying admission or coming for an event, then it would be subject to inspection, but a private event on private property.
See, that's where I say discretion is needed, because RSAs can be vague.
Mm-hmm, right. Right.
And this isn't a RSA, but.
Or twisted.
We're looking at one of the RSAs that prohibit the um, or that cover our inspections. The way it words is we can't do inspections on one and two family dwellings, but we can on all the commercial buildings, it's accepted.
This is life safety, you're talking.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Hmm.
Yeah, okay. So we just leave it be?
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm inclined to say leave it be with, in the guidelines, to kinda use the verbatim of. The building code, or I was trying to find in the fire code, I've gotten the wrong book. In the guidelines and just kinda let it be on the honor system for the yards, I guess, with a fee attached to it. But when we go to things like Hill Fest, which we know are large events, yeah, then we are certainly enforcing.
Now, tonight, all we need to do is just adopt the twenty twenty one building code, but the application we could still work on, right? Or do you need to turn in this whole application to the state? Or do you just notify?
Good question, I'm I'm not sure if I just have to put the amendment, I, I don't know, how I read it is like they, whatever guideline you have in place, it would say.
Yeah.
Right.
And this is our guideline.
So she would have to say yes.
I think the whole thing.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know if that's.
The rest of the guidelines, are they different from the building code?
Well, no, it just seems like some of the the wording. You know, cuz if this had gone, if we simply didn't question anything and just, yep, we're gonna approve this, that, you know, look, that looks, looks good. Then we would have still had that section, and then the upwards would have started, you know, so it's just sort of making sure that we have it locked down, like, if we're changing the application.
Right. Right.
So that's why I asked that question, cuz we could simply adopt the twenty twenty one code this evening and then.
Yeah.
You know, work on the um.
Yeah, and then we have till the third, we have till the thirtieth to like send it to the state.
Yeah.
So from now to ten days, we gotta help the other amendments, and if you guys take more time to go over and see anything else before we send it to the state finally.
Okay.
Well, the rest of the application is pretty tried and true, like, it's been out for a while.
And then. Yeah, and you guys have a plan.
Yeah.
Right.
The one, the one question I had on the rest of the application was. What requires a permit, all structures two hundred square feet and larger? So if I put an addition on my house, that's a hundred and twenty square feet, I don't need a permit?
You do.
Where is that?
But that's not considered in a, in an individual structure, it's an alteration, addition to your house.
Right.
And those um.
Where is that?
Are based on square footage fee, they're, those guidelines are on page. Ten, the bottom square starts.
Is all that language was taken from the code book?
No, no, that was not taken from the code book. From, I mean, from the twenty twenty one, the the general requirements I didn't touch except um, if I saw a typo, that that was created before me.
So what is the uh, structure referred to there?
I believe that is for accessory buildings, so we could add all accessory building structure?
Because.
It's. It's like a shed or garage.
But they can tents too.
Well, that was numbered in paragraph two.
Or rest. And that tents two, I think.
So paragraph two says what does not require all accessory buildings less than two hundred square feet.
So all, it should say all structures greater than two hundred square feet at top.
No, it requires, it says all structures two hundred.
These readings under number two.
Right, and so all accessory buildings less than two hundred square feet do not require, but the top one should say all structures greater than two hundred square feet require.
Well, correct.
So that's, should be added, good catch.
So if a, if a structure is less than two hundred square feet, but if it's attached to your house, now it's, you need a permit, but if it's not attached to your house.
Cuz it's an addition.
Then you don't need a permit, so like a gazebo.
Right.
Yeah, it does, it says right there, Jason, additions to an existing structure, not one.
Yeah, cuz it's not a standing well on building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like a porch or a sun deck is where I'm getting at.
Yeah.
A deck or a porch is, uh, uh, it considered an accessory?
It it's considered an alteration.
That's, see, that's where they, that's where they're not clear.
Right. Yeah.
And.
It does say have that verbiage on the fee schedule too.
Is it?
I love this, that book.
And the reason I'm asking is I'm looking, thinking of putting on a screen porch, it'd be like a hundred and twenty square feet. Now, seriously, I looked at this thing and I said, any structure under two hundred.
Well, can you save your inquiry, your private inquiries for private time?
Well, it's good.
And you're trying to like.
I'm making a public example of myself.
So.
They do have.
I mean, everything has to be changed, but, so under residential accessory building decks.
So any size deck.
So, I mean, really, the fee schedule needs to be changed too, if that's not. So how is it, I don't, I have not said what the fee schedule is.
Which is a good question.
Yeah, I didn't say it wasn't a good question.
How is it death of accessory building?
We can get back to this.
I would think it would be an alteration.
See, well, we can get back to it, cuz I need to know if I need a permit or not.
Okay.
It's a little tiny screen porch, but.
Yeah. Alright.
Is it gonna hold ten people or more?
But I'll, I will take the, I'll take the chairman's tip, I say, leave my purse.
Appreciate it. And then we should have um, a full dialogue on the fee schedule and any updates that um, you all are looking to have made.
I agree.
Does that sound fair, Casey?
Yes.
Alright, so when, whenever you're ready.
Mm-hmm.
Um, please let us know, uh, but there can't be any assessment of the fees, even if it's in that code book, until we adopt the fee schedule. So just because we're adopting this, potentially, we're potentially gonna adopt this, doesn't mean that automatically the fee schedule is gonna change. Right? No?
Correct, I agree with that, doesn't mean it's automatic.
Okay, alright, yeah, yeah, so any changes that go to this should come before this board.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, make a motion to accept the permanent application guide and requirements for the town of New Ipswich. Um, and the twenty twenty one international building code.
As amended.
Yeah, as amended. Is there a second?
I can second.
Here we go.
Did you second?
I seconded it.
Further discussion? None, no, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye, aye.
Oh, I thought you were gonna do it.
I was tempted.
You knew it was gonna come, that's why I thought I, I wouldn't.
Now, we did just approve the permit application.
Correct. Yeah.
Are we gonna get clarification on whether or not I need a permit?
Tomorrow.
So our business hours are.
Then it should be.
I can clarify your addition?
Oh, it's a, a s- a porch, it's a covered porch.
It's a screened in porch.
I would say yes.
Yeah, that's what my instinct tells me, but my reading the. The application guide, I don't quite.
Some people call it screened in porch, some people call it the first step to a, in a new room.
You have four forty, certain stuff.
And I'm reading directly out of the code book. The passage that says permits required, and it goes on to say, any building or structure to erect, install, enlarge, alter, or repair. Of a building that is regulated by this code. So since your house would be regulated by this code, you're enlarging it.
There you go.
Thank you for your time.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Joe Brian, how good work, appreciate it.
Thank you, Casey.
You're welcome.
Uh, Lou, this is the built, the current building fee schedule.
Okay.
If you're moving on.
You're moving, you're moving out?
I'm outta here and I'm timing off to go to the Ridge Fire Department meeting.
Oh, fun.
I was hoping for an excuse to stay here.
Oh, well, there it is, cuz I'm sure you have a list for us of things that you would like.
I mean.
Us to do to make your job easier.
Actually, we can do another question, but it might go out of turn of your, your agenda.
So what I can say is that we can take the question in, and then we'll have to move uh, forward, cuz Mr. Latnens is in.
And she can answer it. Missing a school district, do we apply permits to fees to the school district?
No fees.
Oh.
Thank you for the question.
Yes, thank you.
I like that question.
Yeah, if it's being done on a school property, there's no fee, just like town.
We haven't.
We, we, they have to do the permit, but not the fee.
It just closes the circle.
Yep, perfect, thank you.
Have a good day.
Hello, Kenny.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. You brought a big map.
In order to legally keep my log landing not blocked off, so that when I wanna work on trails and whatnot, I told I need to come to you. I only brought two copies, sorry.
What would, what would make you have to block it off?
I have a copy of it.
They said that. According to the road agent, um, each lot only can have one driveway unless approved by the selectman, so.
Correct.
True.
So he said in order to keep that driveway open and not block it off, I need to come to you guys.
So that, this new line there, um, Peter, he, Kenny was doing some logging on the property and Peter approved a temporary. Um, a temporary driveway, so he could get in and out.
Yeah, I've seen.
And now he wants to make that temporary driveway permanent.
So it was a log landing driveway?
Correct, yeah.
And is there any regulations that prohibit you from entering your property anywhere along Collins Road?
Um, I don't know, I, it sounded like from the road agent, I'd have to block it off with rocks or something for it to be considered not a driveway anymore in order to keep it open.
Well, there was a lot of rock wall there as a boundary, so you took that down.
I took that down, we did the log landing, I put it back with the exception of like twenty feet in front of where the gravel is. Um, and basically for that to be legally open, I think I need approval from you, if, if I don't have approval from you, I'm supposed to put rocks back across that opening.
I'd like to know where that's based off of.
Huh?
Cuz you can have four wheeler trails all over your property.
Right.
Why would he ever need to ask for permission?
You're not supposed to remove rock walls, it gets kinda funky, cuz out in the back areas of properties, naturally can't see unless you're gonna go out there. People could, in theory, do whatever they wanted to do on their property, right, like you're saying, like, just move and manipulate all these different things. But that plays as a boundary, you know, with the road, like, it's a known and unseen boundary. And from what I understand, there's certain protections on rock walls specifically, and I'm sure some of the language that you're speaking of, you know, talks to that, like, you need to put the rock wall back as opposed to.
Yeah, I honestly didn't look at and to a depth, I'm just going off what the road agent told me, and that's why I'm here, so I.
Well, you're, you're a builder.
Yeah, I didn't, yeah, I know, but I.
Come on, Kenny.
I didn't really study your code and find out what, what it said exactly, they just said.
I have forty copies of the driveway regulations, Barry didn't know.
It's not that, the rock wall thing isn't even in the driveway regs, it's, it's in the.
It's a part of the um.
It's a part of the, it's the state, it's the zoning ordinance.
It's a state. These are social original markers for.
For pro- boundaries.
For boundaries.
Property lines.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the stone wall thing.
Yeah, so that's not even.
And we did go through it where, um, you want this at, like, it's going to be a permanent access.
Yeah.
Um, and that's, it is, it's a part of.
For use, like.
So like, if I wanna go build trails or food plot, I can just pull in, unload the mini and do my thing and then pull back out, rather than have to move rocks out of the way, get into my property and then put rocks back every time would be.
This sounds crazy to me.
Yeah, it did to me too.
I don't get it.
But.
Cuz this isn't, this is not an access to a dwelling.
No.
This is simply.
Once a year or every couple of years, I might pull in there and work on something and then pull back out, but.
I don't like this.
Well, it closes up the loop for him with the state, that he has the. For harvesting the timber, you know, that's all guided by and regulated by the state, right, the forestry department.
Yeah, this is, yeah, the, as far as the state's concerned, I don't think they care whether I close that entrance back up or not, it's a town, a town either.
No, cuz it'd be logging, the only thing that also came up was line of sight if it became a driveway.
Yeah.
Oh.
And that's a biggie.
So the second page is, cuz I asked Peter to send me his opinion. And he said he inspected the proposed driveway off the class six portion of Collins Road near the cul-de-sac. The issue I see is not having a si- safe site distance between the driveway entrance and the north direction part of Collins Road going down the hill towards Page Hill Road. I lose sight between a hundred and fifty and two hundred foot sites, site distance, so.
The class six portion?
That's what he said.
That's, that's.
So somebody's gonna be coming up the class six portion where two hundred feet's not accepted, look.
I mean, maybe not today, but in the future, maybe.
Really, actually, actually, the state thinks four hundred feet.
So. So.
Four hundred on all roads?
Yeah.
So I, I emailed him back and I said, I asked him, do you propose he move it or put it somewhere else, or, and he said, no. He said, as far as sight wise, where he has it is the most visible sight line. So.
And you have that follow-up?
Yeah.
Correspondence too?
Yeah.
Cuz that would be good to have as a part of this, instead of just having this.
Yeah. Yeah, I can print that out.
Okay.
This is, cuz a driveway permit is to. Access to a, a dwelling.
No.
What's a driveway?
It's, it's just a second access point, it's an access point, to a property.
To a property.
It doesn't necessarily have to be to a dwelling.
I don't like that he has to come here.
In this case, it's a logging.
But it's a second.
In this case, it's a logging.
No.
But it's, it's not gonna be used for years.
Probably twenty years from now, it'll have another timber harvest there, but in the next twenty years, it'll probably see an excavator enter eight or ten times to work on trails or food plots or something.
Which is, yeah, that's just crazy. So why?
I don't understand the, the crazy part.
It's a second access point to the same piece of property.
I think cuz.
No, but it's.
I think cuz me and Jason grew up in old school New, New Ipswich, where you wouldn't ever even think to come.
This is contractors.
You wouldn't even think to come to ask to do something like this, like, when I was told I had to do this, I'm like, wow, I didn't know, I lived in Nashville, New Hampshire.
Well, I think the reason, and I was privy to it when it was happening, was Collins Road had just been paved.
Yeah.
And you're coming in right at the end of the paving.
Yeah, and he was worried about.
And there was some worry that this would have to be monitored to make sure that it doesn't get destroyed.
Right, sure.
And that was the whole reason of saying, yes, we're gonna approve where that thing comes from.
Yeah.
And then there was, um, some other talk on the other, other end of Collins Road, but, but for this.
So Peter's replies when I asked if he should move it or whatever, he said if he moves it up toward the class five section of Collins, it will make it worse for visibility down the hill toward Page Hill. Him keeping it there is probably going to be the best place in that area.
Alright.
So I will print that out and put it with.
So the way I look at this, Jason, is that there's, we come across all these scenarios that there's no paperwork and people get into trouble with their neighbors on things and all these different things that come up, cause we do have regulations that need to be enforced and we have some latitude with a lot of it, like the way that we enforce it or the permits that we approve, like for different things. Your intent right now is, like you said, not to build on the property. You could decide tomorrow. Like it could just happen to sell the property potentially. I know like not, but anything can happen tomorrow. There's a lot of what ifs. But then what, without having that
Document.
The driveway there creates a problem down the line and question for I, I don't know. I'm just, I just, I, we've run across it without having paperwork for things and we have to backfill stuff and try to do excessive amounts of research or why was that, like why is that driveway even there? Because it is, it's a drive. Like people are gonna be driving through it. It's not necessarily just a car, it's machinery, equipment. You know, it just.
Now then, so we.
This is not what I thought was gonna turn into a big conversation.
Well, no.
I know, I know. I thought it was gonna be.
I'm back to property owners. So now, it just seems like a waste. Um, it just really seems like a waste. He's, so we give him a permit here. Now, three years from now, he wants to build a house there, but that driveway permit doesn't work.
Why not?
Because after looking at the lay of the land, it's like, well, the house would actually be better up here.
Well, I mean.
You know what I mean? Why, why are we putting that?
Because the only, the only reason that he needs approval is cause it's a second access point to the same piece of property.
No, that's.
In the driveway regulations that if you want a second access point, you have to have approval from the selectmen. All you gotta do is say, yeah.
Even if it's two thousand acres, you still need.
Right.
No, that's.
I mean.
I don't think that's, that's not.
If he wanted to put another house on it, he'd either have to go before the zoning board or subdivision.
I don't believe that's the, all the intent. This is not at all the intent of the driveway regulations.
Well, I believe the intent of the driveway regulations was to prohibit a second driveway altogether, but they left it some latitude there.
Right.
For whatever reason, I don't know.
But they didn't, there's no such thing as an access point that's different than a driveway?
It's the same thing.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow.
You could have an access point if you've got like a barn and you need to have.
You'd need to ask permission by the selectmen to.
Absolutely.
Well, like the clocks they came in, cause they had, I mean, they had been using it for years, but they happened to pave it.
I mean, theirs was servicing a, theirs was servicing a residence.
I do have fourteen cows coming in the morning, so it might end up being a barn there at some point.
Here we go.
There you go. Boom. Drive.
Now we're talking real go.
While you're at it, Ken.
Yeah.
Would you like to add a few more, just in case you decide to put your barn down here?
No.
You can legally walk your cows into your property.
No. I think.
You'll funnel them all up here. I don't like this.
It's, it comes with the, the day and the age. I don't care for it much myself, but.
It doesn't have to though.
Yeah.
I'd require an amendment to what your regulations currently say.
This is crazy.
I'll propose a change.
Well, you know, that's all I've been doing the last six months.
I think there's a lot of things in the regulations that are crazy, like the one acre of under fifteen percent slope is insane in my opinion.
I'm just gonna wrap this right back quick to this conversation.
Yep.
I could go through your regulations and hand you quite a few that I think are outrageous.
Well, that would be appreciated.
Feel free, yeah.
Yeah.
That would be.
Yeah.
Although it really goes to the selectmen, but I'd be interested. I mean, the planning board.
The planning board. Yeah. I mean, anybody can do that. If you, if you think that things are
Yeah.
wacky, then absolutely.
Well, I have a feeling they may ruin something.
I mean, when we did the driveway regulations.
When you need an acre, a non steep, non wet, and ninety percent of the houses I built, all you ever disturb is like point four, point five acres. Why do you need a full acre when you don't even disturb that much for your entire yard? It's like inceptic and well, so it's like, I don't know. There's, I could go through your regulations and give you a little outline of as a builder's point of view of what I think is outrageous, but.
Have at it, man.
Please do, yeah.
I remember when I did that two block subdivision on Stone Road, I cut out a property, stumped it, graded it, cause it was like fifteen and a half percent slope, graded it to fourteen and then submitted my subdivision regulations, because that's how wack the regulations were. I could bring the property into compliance by doing a little bit of grading, but it's kinda silly. That was back twenty seven years ago.
Hmm, so again, we'll keep it down to this.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay.
But I would like to see, I wanna see, before we have to officially vote on this, I want to see where in the regulations tractor access requires a driveway.
There was one chart, I can't really look in.
Well, technically, we'd be pulling in with a pickup and a trailer, unloading the tractor and then or a mini excavator, whatever it is, but.
Yeah, my.
And it's gonna be regular access, Jason. This is, it's not going to be necessarily once a year, like reality is, it's probably gonna be regular access. Um.
I think it probably would be.
His driveway regs. I can read them on my phone.
Yeah. If it was my only property, it'd probably be more than once a year, but I have property everywhere that I gotta maintain, so it probably really would be used once a year. But so regularly, or the amount of use.
Access point, an opening that provides access to a, a lot for vehicles during construction and is closed when all site work is completed, unless it is the driveway entrance. A driveway, a public or private, I can't even read with my glasses, it's so small. roadway providing primary access for vehicles from either a highway or private street to a drought, dwelling, structure, business, parking area, or facility that is used on a regular basis.
He has none of them.
Driveway entrance, the junction of the driveway with a highway or a private street.
There's none of them right now, and that's what.
Well, yeah, that's why.
So I appreciate that you came in, because.
Yeah. I do too. This is a good thing.
Well, no, cause it's kind of like how you had said before, so you could take that, right? Just use it, use it, use it, and then all of a sudden put up the structure, but you don't have an approved driveway.
Yeah.
You can't put up a structure without going for a building permit. And to get a building permit, you need a driveway.
I know, so then there's, so you're like trouble at that.
That's the order that it goes. No, they couldn't be, because before you put up any structure, you need a building permit.
But he could say.
And when you go to get a building permit, they'll say, first thing you need is a driveway permit.
And he'll say, I've been using this for twenty years.
And they'll say.
Well, that's not grandfather until it's twenty one or pre zoning.
No, it's not.
There is no.
Yeah, I guess it's not grandfather at all anymore.
Well, that, that also has not been shown to me either.
Pre zoning?
No.
Grandfather.
That, I am, I'm not convinced of it.
State law says that, no, I, I will eventually someday find it.
But so really, when I, when I look at this.
State driveways.
The state accepts grandfather on a state road.
No, on driveways.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, I believe they do, but what I, what I see here.
Sixty seven or whatever, on a state road, it's grandfather.
What I see here is way the cart before the horse. That's what I see. There is no, it didn't meet any of the criteria, so.
Can I just? Yeah.
When you've got that property, was that opening already there?
No, I made it just for this log landing.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, the trees were so tightly grown in there that the, the rings were like incredibly tight, so it needed to be opened up. That forest was like stinted.
So, yeah, and my whole thing of making this scene, if you will, is back to the regulations. If he wants to use that portion of his property, you know I have no issue with it. What I have an issue with is me having to give him permission to. I don't like.
That's not giving him permission to make use of the property, it's just the opening, because, yeah.
To access it.
Well, I mean, it has to be safe too. You know what I mean? It's basically just ensuring that it's safe.
So, can I propose, can we pause this? And just, you can do a little dig in, you can do a little dig in, I'll do a little dig in and just sort of make sure.
Well, I think she just read the regulations and the definition of a driveway is accessing a structure, business, or something that's used on a regular use.
Or parking lot.
If there's no structure there, technically it's.
Not even legal.
Access point is.
It's not even legal to.
Is you're gonna use it for a minute and then close it back up when you're done.
Oh, but my thing is I don't wanna close it back up.
But you know how you can get around that, is put a gate.
Yeah. Oh, I'm fine putting a gate or a chain across or.
Yeah, I'm saying anything about gates or chains or nothing right now. I'm on pause.
Well, yeah, I mean, the whole thing is.
Cause I don't wanna do anything that dis serves you or the community, so it's just sorta, yeah.
Yeah.
This is very, very good, uh, advice there.
Yeah.
Take anything I said with a grain of salt.
Well, how about you guys just let me know what I need to do to make it legal in the town size when you figure that out?
I think that'd be the best way forward right now, is just to do a little bit more research and make sure that we approach this in the correct fashion.
Okay. As long as I don't have to come back here.
We, we like having you come.
I got apartment to do.
How, how wide, how wide is the opening that you have now?
Sixteen feet, or probably stone wall, the stone wall is probably twenty to twenty-two, but driveway is like sixteen-ish.
Alright.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Have a good night.
Yeah, you too.
So you're gonna add, uh, Peter's follow-up email to the minutes too?
Yes, yeah. I'll, I'll throw this one away and do the follow-up since I've read it anyway.
Alright, yeah, so what is it, the whole, the whole thread?
Why did I brought my phone to you? Yeah.
What's the homework assignments?
More research.
Just to take a look at, um, and like I'm gonna inquire with a few people that bounce things off of, of like just this, like scenario and the pros and cons to it and get their opinion and thoughts on it, cause there's always scenarios that you don't think of where not. So approving the driveway in this location could potentially negatively impact him down the line, potentially, you know, like for something I don't understand or not approving it. So it's just sort of, that's my question. Like, is it better to go about it in this fashion or not? This is what our regulations say. Maybe the state guidelines say something even different and our regulations aren't even as strict as the state guidelines.
It's gonna be illegal.
It would?
Yeah, it would.
So just making sure that we do right by the community as well, because all the butters also have rights as well, and no matter what we do, we should apply what we do equally amongst everybody.
Inconsistently.
Yeah, inconsistently. And I can definitely see the point not to have, you know, just no driveway. Like it seems safer to have a driveway, like one specific driveway, maybe two, if it can be pulled off safely, but not have six driveways that are tightly closed together or one, you know, paved spot in front of the road unless it was identified in some way. You know, like I don't know why you'd need that, like, I don't know. Trying to understand it all.
And I mean, right now, that part of Collins Road, nobody uses it. It's barely.
No, it's on class six.
So.
That entrance comes just before the paving starts.
Right before, right.
Yeah, but I do.
It's off in the woods.
It would be nice if we could get full pictures and full scopes of things in our community, but it doesn't seem to be the place. Like the way that people prefer to do things is to find the minutia in the guidelines, play up to the point where they have to say something and then it, it creates problems down the line for the different um, regulations and things, because you can go so far in the wrong direction and then you're like, well, I'm already pot committed. What are you gonna do? And then you have to start making concessions in the regulations and then that has, can have negative impacts in other places where it's intended to protect, say, water supply or whatever, you know, it just. It's hard to be consistent with everything. I understand having to use judgment, um, with some things, but I don't know. We'll just see. Let's see. It did sound like there was gonna be a dwelling sooner rather than later.
Not tonight, I didn't hear that.
I did, fourteen cows are getting dropped off tomorrow, so a barn's gonna be going up soon probably. That's not verbatim, but was said just like that, you know, so it was kinda, and then the retraction. And I don't wanna get into too much of that aspect, but I believe you understand, you know, what I'm saying too.
Yeah, my whole point was if there's gonna be a structure, you don't you know, sure the structure is, then you have a driveway to your structure. It's a driveway. This is right now, this is.
Nothing.
It's nothing.
It's access, but not necessarily even an access point. Cause it's not something you're gonna put back the boundary wall. I mean, that's a whole nother.
I get it. I was just up there before the meeting, like just take a look at it.
Yeah.
And I was thinking about a different cut in Collins as what it was, cause I went up before the logging really started. Um, couldn't really identify it, but now it's just a.
It looks like a house lot.
And once he said a barn, I could see it, like it's all leveled out, like, you know.
Yeah, it looks like a house lot.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But if it is gonna be something, then you don't come.
Yeah, it makes sense just to, like to do it as a part of that process.
That's how I think.
I see what you're saying, yeah. If you're gonna build a barn, then come for the driveway permit.
Yeah. But then it'd be good to have it'd be this meeting somehow categorized so that it can't get shoved down our throat that, well, this is where it is. You know, like, cause it's always been here, you know, and, yeah.
I'll put, I'll put.
Yeah.
I'll put, yeah, I'll put, I'll put the minutes, I'll attach it to the property file for that piece of property.
Oh, good. Yeah, so there's some type of tracking, yeah.
Yeah, and I believe the original, I didn't look at the original driveway permit, but it was specified for log landing.
Yeah, oh yeah, it was a tempor- it was a temporary.
Yeah.
Drive, it was a temporary access point.
Yeah, that's how I understood it.
Right.
And that's where I'm like, why does it need?
But.
It was a permanent access point.
But a temporary access point, he would've had to put the rock wall back up. That was the intention of that original temporary access point, which got approved. However, now he's saying he does not wanna put the rock wall back up. He wants to use it permanently.
Yeah, well, he put the wall all the way, except for the last.
So that's why he came. Right, but that's, that's, except for the access point. So that's why he came to get the second permission to use that as a second. Alright, so we're gonna continue this to September third?
Can I throw in one extra question?
Does that give you two weeks to, um?
Hold on, Debbie? Lou?
If he decided that he wanted to use the area to put a large concrete pad on to store his excavator for the winter time.
Never mind a large concrete pad if he put gravel.
Yeah, gravel.
How about a tent?
Gravel is a structure.
Anyways, yeah.
Whatever, what I'm saying, yeah, it's, it's got to be full use.
It went from temporary to permanent. That's the way I'm looking at it.
Right.
So it's just, I wanna look at the minutia of that and just see.
Right.
So bringing a focus in on.
Yeah.
Alright, moving on, and amazingly, we're still on schedule.
Okay. So September, September, how did that happen? September third?
We'd be way ahead of it, wouldn't for me tonight.
Right? I know.
No, that's good. That's a good point. Um.
Kidding. Um, September third.
Yeah, yeah, cause it's basically just a, yeah, update. There's nothing
Is, is the next meeting. That gives you guys.
Holding him up from doing whatever and, yeah.
No, yeah, he's, that's what he said. Whenever you decide, just let me know.
Yep.
So, um, that gives you guys two weeks to dig in.
Yeah, we'll come back to it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alrighty. Alrighty, moving on to round take. How you doing? I posted two minutes, did you see that?
Oh, good, thank you.
Joe, did you have anything that you wanted to come to us with?
No, uh, we had the FAC meeting last Monday, it went pretty well. Uh, so I think we're good, we'll start our official meetings on the ninth, I think, on Monday after the Liberty weekend, so. Uh, Mitch has volunteered to hang around through September to help us out too, so that'll help with the transition, so.
Excellent.
We'll figure about where we are.
That's great.
Yeah.
Um, I did read through your minutes, quick.
Yeah.
Nothing major, probably just give you a call tomorrow.
Yeah, that's right.
I actually add more personnel, I guess anyways.
Excellent.
Alright, yeah.
Oh, that's good, yeah.
Alright, cool.
Ooh. All of a sudden, that sun just hit the right spot and right through my eyeball.
Yeah. So how do you feel going forward, do you have any concerns with the upcoming coming push?
Uh, you know, so so far, so good, um, Bruce is gonna ramp up real fast, uh, Melissa wasn't able to make the meeting, she was traveling the business, so. Uh, Luke has picked up a few more departments, so you know, I I think we'll get there.
Do you think you have enough members, like to spread out the workload, as I can kinda get into some of it now, cause it's basic.
So right, right now, we we've got things covered, uh. Melissa's availability, if if that becomes an issue, then I'd certainly like to ask somebody else, if you have somebody in mind that's interested, I'd gladly welcome the opportunity to bring someone up and 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 train them as well, cause it it will be a little tight.
Okay. Yeah, okay, so let's keep our ears open for.
Alright, I'm volunteering.
Anyone that might be interested.
I think there was somebody else, I thought Bruce knew somebody.
Yeah, so uh Garrett Trappy had expressed some interest, but uh but probably not now, yeah.
Didn't materialize, okay.
Okay, alright, yeah, so we're kinda if the current group shares the workload as outlined. Which would go good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely, yeah.
Alright.
Yeah, so we're changing up a couple of things, I'm gonna tell uh Peter with the DPW, the transfer station this year, uh, so I'm gonna ask Melissa to pick up some of the, some of the. Ones that I had worked on last year, uh, and I think that should work out well, that way, if we run into a snag with those departments, I can, I can step in and help out pretty easily. But I wanted to understand more about the DPW this year, cause that was a big uh. You know, Dennis leaving, that's a big hole for us, so I figured I'll I'll do that.
Oh.
Okay.
Have you scheduled any meetings with Peter yet?
I'm gonna wait until after the uh Labor Day and then ramp up on that. I still have a bunch of things I have to do, I need to get the template going and and uh that's gonna take some time, and then I have to transition some of the work that I done the last couple of years. Prepare some of that stuff to transition, so.
Then it should be easier with the new software, right?
Absolutely.
Oh, it will?
Yeah.
Good.
So I I'm pretty pretty comfortable with that new software now, so I can, I can do a lot of the footwork myself and rather than trying to reach out and and ask questions, I can go in there and dig and look and see for myself now, so that helps out a lot.
Nice.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Cool.
Who's your vice president? You're the president of the FAC, who's the vice chairman?
Yeah, we we don't have a president and a vice president.
No chain of command.
Is there, is there someone who's learning this stuff? Is what my question is, is there someone who's learning this stuff from you?
Uh, so. You know, he, Lu- Luke, Luke is great with the people, but he's not a spreadsheet person, so we really need somebody to be a spreadsheet person, Bruce is a spreadsheet person, so. Uh, I would, I would look to him and say, and actually Melissa is is as well, so um, right now, I'd be looking to them to say, to to pick up some more. But uh, but yeah, they're they're both very capable people, so.
Good.
And Luke is picking up fast, but he's still not really a spreadsheet person, right?
Do I need to give them, look, all of them access to the software, like you have?
Uh. Let me, let me talk to them about it, maybe, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah. We need to fill out our volunteer forms too.
Oh, yeah, good call.
Yeah. I think that's it for me.
Okay.
Welcome, thanks, Joe.
Thank you very much. Me?
Alright, you.
I'm up.
You're up.
Okay, um, so the cemetery trustees met and nominated, um, the form is in the, the appointment thing is in the folder there. Um, Tim Blaze to be Sexton.
What's the rule of name?
Tim Blaze, he actually used to do the um mowing slash landscaping or whatever at the cemeteries. So, and we voted three to zero, and actually Bernie showed, wait, so he, or four, it was actually four to zero to nominate him.
They actually hired him.
Well, yeah.
Right, we don't, we don't have.
Yeah.
That's their job.
Yeah.
Cemetery, we don't really hire, we don't have to authorize or anything with it.
Yeah. Oh, I just.
Right?
We nominated, so.
Cause like, cause they're their own elected committee and.
I don't know.
Hmm.
I think it went on, but.
Do we have any?
Well, so it's kinda going through.
I mean, it is kinda hiring, but not hiring, I don't know, I mean, it's a stipend position.
Yeah, I don't know the guidelines behind the Sexton and appointments, you know, directly off the end, like who.
I thought any of the things that were appointed had to be through the select board.
There isn't none.
If it was an appointed position, it had to be like.
No.
Of officially approved by the selectmen.
Yeah.
Maybe doesn't. No harm, but I just a question.
Other thing to look at, well, it'd be a harm if we're creating more work, right?
Yeah. More. Yeah.
Yeah.
Piece of paper.
Yeah, well, or should the um cemetery trustees be the ones that would fill this out?
Well, we did.
No, I know, by, you know, appointing them, right?
Oh.
Yeah.
Hiring, really, that's what they're doing, they're not appointing, they're hiring.
Or hiring, yeah. Yeah.
I guess he does, he does go up with the payroll.
Another thing to look at.
Right.
Yeah.
So in that sense, I can.
Yeah.
See, like we, we sign off on every new DPW hire.
On the hire forms, yeah.
Yeah, payroll update form.
Is that what that is?
Well, no, this is the um appointment form.
That's the nomination, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, I could say nomination, appointment form, hang on, I gotta grab a coffee. Off the nomination form.
Yeah, yeah, when did you sign it?
That day.
That was.
She had it ready, and then I'm like, wait a minute. We don't even know, um, what Bernie thinks of this, sir, cause he wasn't there when I was there, I was there at the meeting, for part of their meeting, I wasn't there when Bernie got there.
Yeah.
So. And you know what it was, I remember now, because you already signed Cody's appointment.
Mm-hmm.
When I came in Tuesday, so I told Debbie, ha, I beat you on Tuesday, he beat me last.
Yeah. Yeah.
Alright, I, I wasn't sure if we had like, if she had a stamp of her signature or something.
So.
Yeah, yeah. We don't know.
Now, there's a thought.
Yeah, alright.
Um, so do you have to make a motion to accept it, or does it just sign it, or?
But you did try.
Uh, I don't know.
I mean, not, whenever we've submitted those, a motion was made to accept the nomination from whatever committee board, whatever. The, yeah.
Yeah, I guess it certainly doesn't like hurt, but just to know, we're not looking to step on the cemetery trustees' toes with this, and, yeah, well.
Appointment. Right.
Yeah, that's my.
Yeah, well, I mean, we talked about it at cemetery trustees.
Okay, yeah. Uh, make a motion to approve the appointment of Tim Blaze to the role of Sexton. Um, as put forth by the cemetery trustees on August fourteenth of a vote, three to zero. Is there a second?
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Abstain? Did you aye?
He did aye.
Oh, you aye, I didn't hear.
He seconded, he seconded.
I heard the second, I didn't hear the other aye. I only heard one aye.
I only ayeed you too.
Good.
Be thorough.
Okay.
Fall in votes count in this room.
This is that. Um, I spoke to Jim Cofol, and um, he would like to have the state reps come in again for a discussion. Um, and updates, et cetera, and um, along with Senator Ralard. So he picked a couple of dates, would I write down this, September twenty-fourth or October eighth?
Eighth.
Um, the two dates he's toying with right now, he's gonna send out an email to Diane, Shane, and. Mr. Ralard, and he'll get back to me with the date. We're pretty open, we don't have anything slotted for any of those dates.
This guy might have some stuff.
Well, that's what I said, I said, you know, as things come up, but I know they like to be the last thing of the evening at eight o'clock or whatever, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Hey. That can be our eleven o'clock meeting, midnight meeting.
Yeah, don't wanna do that to them.
Okay, that's.
I think they're used to it at the State House, right?
They might be, yeah.
You know, like, stick with it for the long, like, through the night, depending what.
Right. So, I told him we would be looking forward to it. Um, he's excited to come in. Um, and then.
So we're gonna invite the uh. Governors candidates as well? Kelly A. Yara and.
Um.
Well, I think what you're speaking of.
I'm talking about how the state reps come in and chat, yeah.
Well, just to touch base.
Yeah, yeah, not a um.
Yeah.
Not a candidate.
Meet the candidates night necessarily, I did have a uh brief discussion with Shane.
No.
Yeah.
And he didn't feel like it was necessary, it might even have been over text, but. Um, due to who's running, but like that state, that state rep wise, so if we wanted to hold something else that would be.
This is what I hear.
On us, um, and just know that they wouldn't necessarily come.
Yeah, no one came last time, except for Shane and Jim and Diane, I think.
What's that?
When we, we did that, we opened up like a candidates night, not for local people, not for all local people, but.
Yeah, no, we had, we had General Bulldog there.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
It was, it was quite the night.
Oh, yeah, 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 that's right too.
What are you minimizing that, that's a great thing.
It just, there just wasn't very many attendees, we had Karen Sexton was there.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, we actually had quite a few candidates.
We had a lot of candidates.
Oh, yeah, cause we had it over at the school, right here, right, right, right.
Yeah.
I don't know if this race is, so.
Yeah, I don't think it is.
So if you're not.
Can you just hold more?
No.
So if that's something that we're looking at doing, we can, you know, certainly look at, you know, some dates for that again.
Well.
It would be, so we have Congress.
That, that election, isn't that September tenth?
And governor. No, that's primary.
Mm-hmm.
September tenth is primary.
And then the presidential election is November fifth.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
So that's all the other stuff too?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's all the rep.
Yeah, yeah.
So the primaries, the tenth.
State primary.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
I'm so, is it, shouldn't there be?
It's just presidential primary was this.
No, no, I know, I, I mean, November fifth is the official presidential election.
Election, yeah. And other election.
But this, did the state.
Yeah.
Go on that same, I thought the state had their own ballots.
That's the same.
No.
No, it's the same, yeah, same day.
We wouldn't have much time.
No.
It doesn't take much to do.
Yeah.
Cooler full of waters and microphone, go.
And really just a couple of phone calls to the candidates offices.
Have them go, have them, have them go down to Autumn Fest.
Right, yeah.
That would change the tone of Autumn Fest.
But they did. They did, um, two years ago, they did.
Oh, really?
It was fire, yeah, yeah.
I remember.
Oh.
Yeah, not all the candidates, but I remember some people from Will.
But that wasn't a, it wasn't an official part of Autumn Fest, was it?
Well, they got a booth. Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah, they rented, they paid the vendor fee and just to set up a booth.
Who knew?
Yeah, yeah, that's how, it was pretty quiet and peaceable, really, there wasn't any.
Interesting.
Yeah, craziness, craziness that ensued or anything. And I can't remember what the date of our meet the candidates night was, but I believe it was bef, it was after the primary. But before Autumn Fest. Cause I remember feeling like we had our candidates night and then Autumn Fest, and then the election. That could be off too. So, yeah, we're not too late, so if you wanna mill around, come back to that, September third too.
But still. We're gonna have our reps and hopefully the senator this time.
Yeah, he said, he told Jim that he wouldn't miss it this time, I said, well, let's hope Vermont doesn't have any floods.
Touch base with us. Uh-huh.
Right, not on a good track right now.
I know, poor guy.
Uh, I know, how's that? Um, letting down of the water of Banky going with all this rain.
Um.
Yeah.
I know. So that's good, supposed to happen Monday, twenty-sixth, so, oh, yeah, so we need to have them put the sign over there maybe Thursday, you think?
Yeah.
Just for water lawn?
Yeah. Where should we put it, like where people park to go fishing?
That's where I think. Or on Old Country.
Cause there's really nowhere else to put it.
Yeah, cause if you put it kinda rural country comes down and like that intersection of river, and then there's that, is that what you're saying? Like the little wooded area, yeah, there's almost a perfect spot where it looks like there's like a, a gate.
That little island. In between like Joy Town, Joy Lane Carrier.
Or just put it on the, the common.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, like up on the top.
Like Banky?
No.
No, no, so where Carrier Road comes down and Joy Lane goes up and there's that open piece of.
Yeah. Yeah, Joy Lane. Little triangle.
Land. That the town owns.
Yeah.
Put it there.
Only have it for a week or two, it's the difference.
And then it won't get in the way of people parking to go fishing.
Correct, or swimming or anything, yeah.
Right, yeah, I know, that's what I was thinking, if, it seems like the only spot that they would even be rummed to put it, would be down by the fishing thing, but then.
That's a good idea, use that common.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it's just gonna be for however much time we think is necessary.
Correct, yeah, just to make sure that everybody knows that we know and it's.
Right.
Happening for a reason and where to go get information, right, cause we're gonna put the website, like, for information.
Right. Right.
You know, go to the town website.
Yeah. Yeah, cause we put that other stuff on there.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so Carlene is gonna do the cleaning this week. And we had one applicant come in yesterday. Um, and apply for the cleaning position. And someone else acquired today, I don't know if they're, they asked what the pay was, so I haven't heard back. Um. So we'll see about that, and like I said, Carlene's gonna do it this weekend, Lisa's been doing some, Mindy's been doing some.
So are we using that account to pay them?
So I told Carlene, well, I mean, so like Lisa didn't clean the whole office and do, you know, do everything, she did some. She cleaned like the kitchen and back into her office and a little bit of the hall or something, and then Mindy did something else and like a couple of weeks ago. So Carlene's gonna do the whole thing like she used to, so I told her she would get the money, we would pay her to do that. Um. So.
That sounds like some people are dri, kinda chipping in.
Pitching in, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Excellent.
Um, but like I said, we have one person who applied and then um, another person that was interested, so I figured by the next meeting, we can. See what happens, I had Jenny posted again on the website and Facebook.
Okay.
So. Um, was there anything else? Oh, that stuff, so. Um, Jim Hicks had applied for a grant for the emergency management mitigation plan. And the state called me yesterday to find out where all this paperwork was, so I said, well, I never got it, so here it is, so you guys officially have to. Accept the funds. And um, like they sent a whole thing of how it has to be worded in the minutes, so. Um. Excuse me.
Do you have a copy, Luke?
No.
Luke, no.
I unintentionally printed two.
Oh, okay.
But I, if you want, I can go make another one, you want one?
Do you want a copy of the grant application?
I'll just look at it when you're done with it. What is it for?
For um, doing that emergency. For um doing that emergency management mitigation manual. It's it's a huge process, um Jim always kept up on it and I guess it's past few years it's kind of fallen by the wayside. So it needs to be updated. And it's expensive to do.
And this goes, this goes to FEMA?
Yeah.
And what happens if we don't have it and we're not eligible for FEMA, do we leave or what? No one knows.
I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Well, yeah, it's it's that type of thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, where the the town wouldn't be eligible for uh federal funds.
Right. If something happened, yeah.
Possibly, yeah.
So I think the grant is for ten thousand eight hundred dollars, I believe.
And he's willing to do it?
He's been, Jim's been working on it since for a long time. Since March or something, May. He filed all the paperwork then and.
Jim, are we is this just for information for us?
That one is, the one Sean has is the one that needs to be signed.
Does it behold us to anything, other strings?
Nothing I'm looking for.
Oh hey, look who's here. We're not there yet. Not seen, now we're running late.
Not not running late yet.
No.
Not yet. Well, if these guys have anything to say for round table, we might be.
I still have something to check up.
Oh boy.
I have to stay.
Do you wanna look at it?
Reading.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Music.
Our recall maybe I don't know.
Here's all the grant is for is just to fund the update of the plan.
Where does that money go then? Ten thousand dollars.
I guess you I guess you have to pay someone to do.
How is it huge? Oh, you hire a consultant from them to fill it out?
Kinda like the the C I P plan and the ma- master plan. Like we're paying somebody twenty five thousand dollars to do the master plan.
Where?
Mm-hmm.
Ooh.
Um I think it's Southwest Regional Planning Commission.
Mm-hmm, not the whole thing, it's they're working on uh sections
Right.
of it, cause it wasn't enough to address.
Yeah. Twenty five thousand isn't enough to do a whole thing.
But they may go above and beyond and help with more depending on you know, there's like a um secondary list of items um that they ask for.
Mm-hmm. So we need to spend that money too before December thirty first of twenty five. So not a dime of that has been tapped into yet to my.
Yeah. Alright, I know that they've been engaged already, you know.
Yeah, I knew that.
So that's where that's at.
Okay. Hi Jai Chris.
So the only thing it looks like to me is that we need to come up with twelve hundred bucks.
Yep. So and um from what Jim was saying technically you really don't even have to come up with that, it's because you can do administrative fees like
Oh, it's kinda like what Mike had been talking about at another point.
This. Yeah. Right, yeah, so like it took Jim i- X amount of hours to fill out the application and fill out the paperwork and you know do whatever.
Hmm.
So you can use like administrative hours to offset that.
Can you see anything, anything nervous?
No, that's pretty standard, it's been done in the past numerous times, uh and I can't
I didn't. I didn't. Yeah.
Uh I remember directly, I know that we benefited from this in the past as well, like having it been done.
I'd be curious to know where that money goes.
Yeah, like uh through the contracting to use.
Mm-hmm. If there's, if that's what it's used for or or what it's used for.
But they um the state gives it to us and we give it to the feds and vice versa.
Ooh.
Why?
Ta- Task Five. First paragraph. This data may be used to develop updated G I S maps of the following items. We're gonna get free maps?
Right, do it quick, hurry up and sign it. I almost forgot to print that stuff out too. That wouldn't have been good.
I don't think we have anything to boost.
Okay. Make a motion to accept the terms of the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program as presented in the amount of ten thousand eight hundred dollars for updating the local hazard mitigation plan. And acknowledging that the total cost of the project is twelve thousand dollars in which the town will be responsible for a ten percent match of uh roughly twelve hundred dollars. But as stated earlier, that can come in the form of um administrative uh fees. Is there a second?
Second.
Fall in favor?
Hi.
Aye.
Cool beans. You can keep that, trash it, whatever you wanna do.
Good mark.
You can keep it, throw it out, I don't need that, cause I'm just gonna have the signed one.
Do you Jason, do you want to uh keep it? Okay, I'll do it.
Just cover it up your microphone.
It's good. Why'd you pull it so close to us?
Oh, I didn't. Cover your own.
You don't want your voice to be loud enough?
Yikes. Get away from that. I didn't even, I I mean I saw it and I didn't even notice it. Usually I think it's dominant one, right?
So we gotta sign under the.
Sign the front page and initial the bottom of every pa- other page.
I've got one more round table item. There was an email that came through either yesterday or today from um the state legislature talking about um they want input from municipalities um about um the laws that are coming up and uh and they want to, they're offering one member of each municipality such as for us, they prefer the um the uh chairman of the board of the of the board, if not whoever that person selects to represent the uh municipality.
So that's through N H M A.
What's that?
That's N H M A to be on there.
It is.
Legislative updating.
Updates, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And um so I was just wondering if you know you wanna take it or if you wanna assign it to somebody else or however, whatever you wanna do.
Hmm, I didn't see that one.
You may wanna, you may wanna read through that first.
Yeah, yeah, we'll take, so you said it came through the email machine yesterday?
Yeah.
It was from N H M A.
Okay.
I'll forward it.
I tried to take the filter crap off my stuff but I don't get every email from different things like that, like the email likes to
Chuck it, please.
places, yeah.
Not yesterday.
And then this one, do you need your stamp for this one Debbie? Cause I'm signing this back sheet.
I will watch you and then I'll I'll do it after.
Alright, you're watching?
I'm watching. Nice job.
Thanks.
Right. Thank you.
When did that email come to you though? What's that?
It was from N H M A, so I don't know if you guys aren't signed up for.
I get random ones from them.
There you go, N H N H M A got me up there.
Oh, nine o'clock this morning, alright.
Nine oh two A M, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, alright, I do have it.
You got it?
Yep. I filtered it out.
Okay.
Maybe it is on there or other.
Do you wanna send it to you Jim, send?
I don't see it at all. Oh, there's a filter there.
Alright, re-sending.
Jason, do you have anything as a part of round table?
The only thing I have is just a reminder that we're gonna look into if it's legal or possible to change Mimi Road to a class six. Since it's going into conservation. And we talked about it, I think Bob Boynton was the one who brought it up as a possibility, but I don't know if that occurred to me that if some, there's a residence there, I don't know if you can pull that off them. Can you?
I had it, I thought you had to have a public hearing and then do a warrant.
Right, but can you even do it if somebody has a residence on a road, can you pull the wool off?
Well, it'd have to
Pull it right out?
They agree with it, they agree with it.
You'd have to have a public hearing and have, they would have to be notified. You can't just pull the rug out.
So that would be the first.
Yeah, yeah, there's a whole process to changing a road from, and I sent you guys all that stuff, how we change a road from the classification of a road.
Yeah. I don't remember reading.
So we'll we'll have to.
Whether you can do that, because when we were talking to the um gentleman on Boynton Hill he wanted to use Todd Hill, the Todd Road.
Mm-hmm, Todd, yeah.
And then there was this discussion about no residences off of a class six, well, what if we make them? All of a sudden, we make them out of compliance with our laws.
Well. If it already exists, then you're not changing, you're just not doing any new ones.
Yeah, so anyways, just the.
Hey, it was just that aspect of it essentially serving as a driveway.
Right.
That's all it is, it serves one residence that these guys have to.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
There's one at the very top, but they use like which maybe fifty feet or a hundred feet or something.
But you can begin a class six wherever you want, you don't have to begin it.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Right.
They just didn't want it to fall
September third.
Fall away.
Okay. September third is looking really busy. Is everybody around, it's Labor Day weekend? Even though it's Tuesday.
Uh the only thing I had was the minutes don't seem to be on, the select board minutes minutes, I haven't looked at the other boards and commissions, but the last posted one on the website is May seventh.
Oh.
Yeah, but.
Oh, if they're talking about posting on the website, the Greens and our girls asked who they could
Jenny.
Send it to building.
Admin support.
Admin support.
Excuse me.
And she'll happily post it up, load it on.
I will check into that.
Alright.
That's all I had.
Lou?
I said what I had.
Okay, Debbie?
Again?
Jason? Joe?
All good.
Peter, anything in part of the official meeting? Like the, well, it's all official, but the public portion of the meeting?
Yeah, uh actually maybe one real quick thing, um was brought to my attention again about the Old Country Road.
Oh, East Old Country Road?
Yeah, on the one twenty four side by the the part of the Nordstorf or recreation area or whatever.
Yeah.
Or conservation area, um so basically to see where we stand on what the name of that road is, if it's Old Country or is it East Old Country um to find out. And if it's not, then they would like to see if it could be named East Old Country, so that way it differentiates for um emergency vehicles going up there, they had a incident like last winter where they went over on uh River Road and then came up the other class five and then it turns to class six unmaintained and spent I guess like about an hour before they were able to get to the other side, but they figured out it was on the other side. So they had to go way around.
It's an interesting point, cause Collins could almost fall into that same
I know, I was thinking that too.
category like any road that doesn't really truly connect.
Right.
Yeah, there's been, I've heard of people trying going through there like deliveries or whatever.
That may be an interesting way to to deal with it and then get that into the maps and.
Yeah.
Yeah, pretty much the only place that I can find is like Google map, is what.
I I it is all.
Oh, and then also the tax map, because she gave me their
Yeah.
tax map and it does say East Old Country.
Yeah.
So those are the two places I know, everything else we're outlooked, I don't see it as being East Old Country.
Yeah. Yeah.
So.
I hear by W.
But they're, I mean, the tax map is pretty crucial. It has the right address.
Yeah.
We should
So.
we should line up with it because it actually makes sense.
Yeah.
Or was that name just given because someone at that like assessing level could do that? Like to differentiate between
Just put a nickname on it kind of?
That's kind of like, it seems like some of this stuff happens, you know, like somebody just does it and then
Yeah. Byosmosis.
We never change things like that, do we?
I don't think so.
I don't think we ever did.
But with the road.
But it does make sense, and then you gave us the packet
Mm-hmm.
of changing roads.
Mm-hmm.
Classifications, is that also included names too? We need a public hearing to do that. Don't just have the packet.
And then that way once I know it's officially like that, then I can put old um East Old Country on there, uh you know, for the road sign at the end of the road.
No through access.
Yeah, like all that is up there already, but to give it that name.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not at the end of the road though.
So yeah, they know which end they're coming in from, it's either Old Country or East Old Country.
Right. Right, yeah.
It really makes a lot of sense. Yeah, so like when emergency services goes out, then they can see that, oh yeah, there's the sign East Old Country.
Right. Just carry on, yeah. Okay. I'll I'll uh get some research.
That'll be a September third too, Mimi Road, East Old Country Road.
Sounds like you're coming to a
Kinda lump that one together.
It sounds like you're coming to a September third meeting.
Hoping up, hoping up is the September third.
Yeah. No, no, well, busy here.
There you go, good answer, good answer. Alright.
Alright, that's all I have, so that'll conclude the public portion of this meeting, uh Ron, thank you.